Better love I want you Love Better love I want you And your hands up love We better love I want you Love Better love I want you We better love I want you Love Better love I want you We better love I want you
I think I need a break Don't care how long it takes You know I hate the way you lie to me You make me feel so dark You really broke my heart You opened up my scars I think I need a break Don't care how long it takes You know I hate the way you lie to me You make me feel so dark You really broke my heart You opened up my scars I think I need a break Don't care how long it takes You know I hate the way you lie to me You make me feel so dark You really broke my heart You opened up my scars I think I need a break Don't care how long it takes You know I hate the way you lie to me You make me feel so dark You really broke my heart You opened up my scars I think I need a break Don't care how long it takes You know I hate the way you lie to me You make me feel so dark You really broke my heart You opened up my scars I think I need a break Don't care how long it takes You know I hate the way you lie to me You make me feel so dark You really broke my heart You opened up my scars I think I need a break Don't care how long it takes You know I hate the way you lie to me You make me feel so dark You really broke my heart You opened up my scars I think I need a break Don't care how long it takes You know I hate the way you lie to me You make me feel so dark You really broke my heart You opened up my scars I think I need a break Don't care how long it takes You know I hate the way you lie to me You make me feel so dark You really broke my heart You opened up my scars I think I need a break Don't care how long it takes You know I hate the way you lie to me You make me feel so dark You really broke my heart You opened up my scars I think I need a break
You know me like no other 다 표현하지 않아도 See me like no other And I think I like your point of view 다시 돌아와도 돼 I don't care what other people say 놓지 말아봐줘 Dreaming of each other
You baby, on my mind Everyday baby, say you're mine You had me on my mind Everywhere baby, say you're mine Cool with you Cool with you Cool with you Cool with you
이쯤에서 정말로 너는 어떤 결말로 가려해? What's the best? 너 옆에 내가 있을 때
이런 말이 들었나 봐 이제 더 말하지 않아도 알아 우리 둘이 만든 거리 넌 나서 여기
You baby, on my mind Everyday baby, say you're mine You had me on my mind Everywhere baby, say you're mine Cool with you Cool with you Cool with you Cool with you You know me like no other Cool with you See me like no other
In my head, in this bed Stroking me, touching me, warm and tender Four days since, where you been? I can't let go, still remember
Calling me urgency, I'm hurting but I call to me You got my number, hit me back
You know it's certain, I'll always make it worth your while
We can go deep, but I'mma still keep it low-key It's all about us When you miss that crush, let's get in touch I'll wait up, so call when you want to One more round, we'll never round down It's cool with me, call when you want to Just get in touch when you want to Just get in touch, get in touch You got good game, but you wait too long Let's skip the flirt and the dirty talking I can't wait for an episode Sweat dripping, moving in slow mo
Calling me urgency, I'm hurting but I call to me You got my number, hit me back
You know it's certain, I'll always make it worth your while
We can go deep, but I'mma still keep it low-key It's all about us When you miss that crush, let's get in touch I'll wait up, so call when you want to One more round, we'll never round down It's cool with me, call when you want to Just get in touch when you want to Just get in touch, yeah Boy, if you're in any doubt, start reaching out I'll give you that feedback you need, yeah, yeah Just drop a word on the line I wanna hear from ya Don't call us n*** When you miss that crush, let's get in touch I'll wait up, so call when you want to One more round, we'll never round down It's cool with me, call when you want to Just get in touch when you want to Just get in touch, get in touch
You just gotta bang your knees Take a deep breath, and then jump And you might think, "What if I fall?" "What if you go?"
Boy, you talk about love is a danger Looking at myself like a stranger Needed like a drug, never had bliss Always feeling lost in the madness Watching you walk in a ways like a heart attack Chaos is starting my brain, making me real tense Breathing you in until I fall Throwing my heart against the wall You chemical You chemical
Don't think about what comes after or what came before You just gotta bang your knees Take a deep breath, and then jump
화려한 도시 우린 그곳으로 향했던 추레 너와 나 흔들리지 마 이건 별거 아닌 섞인 수야 시간이 가 버튼 해봐 준비 끝내 지금부터야 오늘을 위한 거야 자 아직 보이지는 않았어 떨어 막막한 그 순간 움직임은 보여 어서 내 손을 잡아 즐겨봐 온날못 멈춰 난 차가운 터로 위에서 눈부심 전에 온 사이 어디로 나를 더 데려가 못 멈춰 난 기다려왔던 이 순간 새로워 내 모습이 Give me that, give me that, give me that better 두 다른 세상을 찾아내면 그 피를 잃어도 찾아내 find girl 금 없지 않아도 돼 이건 내 심에 또 danger 높은 buildings 속에선 more 내 어딘가에 커지는 불씨 상상이 되어 아름다울까 매일 밤 꿈꿔왔던 거 좋은 스탠드를 돌려도 눈을 살짝 열어봐 천천히 숨을 허락 나긴 이렇지 못 멈춰 난 차가운 터로 위에서 눈부심 전에 온 사이 어디로 나를 더 데려가 못 멈춰 난 기다려왔던 이 순간 새로워 내 모습이 Give me that, give me that, give me that better 나가는 길은 없는 걸꼭 알게 될 거야 조금씩 앞으로 나가자, oh yeah 눈을 꼭 감아봐도면 글씨 펼쳐질 거야 이제부터 우리의 주제야 그 피를 잃어도 찾아내 find girl 그 피를 잃어도 찾아내 find girl
I wanna drop my rhythm on your feet 지켜다 주어 everything you feel 본적 없을 태제 like that 뭐뭐해도 like that, love 예상을 깨고 흘려보는 틈 제대로 건드는 오기 심해금 까딱인 고개치세 쉽게 다른 너를 이끌어내
Would you die, feel me, die, feel me, die 놓치지 않게 eyes for me, eyes for me now
Let me show you that, show you that, uh-uh, no over me That's that, show you that, show you that, uh-uh, no over me
Let you down, down, 손을 잡아 날 믿고 다음 다음 step을 밟아 Let me show you that, show you that, uh-uh, no over me That's that, show you that, show you that, uh-uh, no over me 원래처럼 down, 손을 잡아 날 비타, 따뜻해 my heart What happened to body, 분투게 만드는 blush Giving my heart and affection, 난 너를 끌는 pilot
We're gonna fly, the skies, and we're gonna sway Right up tight, let me take you there Would you die for me, die for me, die 지쳐가도 돼 eyes for me, eyes for me now
Let me show you that, show you that, uh-uh, no over me That's that, show you that, show you that, uh-uh, no over me
Let you down, down, 손을 잡아 날 믿고 다음 다음 step을 밟아 Let me show you that, show you that, uh-uh, no over me That's that, show you that, show you that, uh-uh, no over me 원래처럼 down, down, 손을 잡아 네 눈빛에 박힌 my heart
Gonna do it, 'cause I want it, gonna move 'Cause I want it, gonna love 'Cause I want it, gonna rule 'Cause I want it, kill the doubt I don't wanna kill the fear I don't wanna kill the rule I don't wanna kill the end I don't...
Let me show you that, show you that, uh-uh No over me That's that, show you that, show you that, uh-uh, no over me 너와 내 time, 멈추지 마 I have no doubt, doubt, 있지 않아 Let me show you that, show you that, uh-uh, no over me That's that, show you that, show you that, uh-uh, no over me 너와 내 time, 멈추지 마 우리가 더를 더 묻잖아
Meant to be, we might be alright now 벗어날 수 없이 it's so fine, fine I swear I will never let you down, down 꿈속으로 나를 가둬줘, oh yeah I know you like you know babe 'Cause you always be my babe
Can't stop, 더 채같이 나 이미 잊혀버린 너 Looking in the mirror 거울 속에 비친 shit stuck in the mirror 내가 들어온 내 paradise Yeah, I'm lost but I like it
Hit it right, 이 순간 make me high, yeah You get it right, get it right Every night, 매 순간을 데려가, yeah You get it right, looking at the starlight Alright I know you like you know babe 'Cause you always be my babe
Can't stop, 더 채같이 나 이미 잊혀버린 너 Looking in the mirror 거울 속에 비친 shit stuck in the mirror 내가 들어온 내 paradise Yeah, I'm lost but I like it
깊이 잠식되어가고 있어 나를 비춰오는 너의 까만 눈속 위태로운 나의 시선 난 어느새
위태로운 나의 시선 난 어느새 반쯤 고장 나 있어 But I have to try, and I don't ever try I'm just too sure to cry, oh 깊어진 내 scar 파고드는 memories Baby, I don't mind, 너만 있다면 it's so fine 다 망가져도 상관없이 be a little selfish, baby 원하는 대로 마음껏 hurt me Cause you're the only one who's gonna give me what I need I'm better, you see, 너를 매일 채워, baby 언제든지 내게 올길, yeah 네 존재만이 유일한 내 구원일테니 One, two, three, you can count on me One, two, three, you can count on me One, two, three, I got all you need Cause you're the only one who's gonna give me what I need 아무리 지고 못한 채 떠난 상처도 that's okay 전부 너의 흔적이기에 so thank you 벗어지고 괜찮게도 아이카롭게 조금 나의 맘이 안 할수록 나 찔러와도 널 끌어안을 테니 멈춰버린 사이 반복되는 tragedy Baby, I don't mind, 너와 있다면 it's so fine 다 망가져도 상관없이 be a little selfish, baby 원하는 대로 마음껏 hurt me Cause you're the only one who's gonna give me what I need I'm better, you see, 너를 매일 채워, baby 언제든지 내게 올길, yeah 네 존재만이 유일한 내 구원일테니 One, two, three, you can count on me One, two, three, you can count on me One, two, three, I got all you need Cause you're the only one who's gonna give me what I need You can count on me, you can count on me 내가 너로 치워 You're the only one who's gonna give me what I need You can count on me, you can count on me 난또 다시 제자리 전부 망가져도 상관없이 be a little selfish, baby 원하는 대로 마음껏 hurt me Cause you're the only one who's gonna give me what I need I'm better, you see, 너를 가득 채워, baby 얼마든지 기대 주기에 네 존재만이 유일한 내 구원일테니 One, two, three, you can count on me One, two, three, you can count on me One, two, three, I got all you need Cause you're the only one who's gonna give me what I need One, two, three, you can count on me One, two, three, you can count on me One, two, three, I got all you need No matter what I know that you can always count on me